Thank you for joining us this evening in regular scheduled council meeting in the Park City City Council on January 26, 2021 at 7:00 PM. Marlo, would you call the roll?
John Lynn here.
Here.
George Glover.
Here.
Ben Sausetta.
Here.
Melvin Kerr.
Here.
Tom Jones.
Here.
George Capps.
Here.
Brandy Bailey.
Here.
Jim Schrader.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Tonight Pastor Bob Darnell is going to lead in the invocation and George Glover is going to lead in the pledge. If everybody please stand.
Good evening to the council, mayor, those who are in administrative offices of this city. Heavenly Father, we come before you this evening. Lord, as men and women have gathered here, Lord, to weigh the matters, Lord, to make decisions for the betterment of our community. Lord, as they weigh these matters and consider them, Lord, Lord, place it within their hearts, Father, and minds, Father, Lord. Pass their votes and to decide and discuss. Lord, we thank you for your grace. Thank you, Lord, for the reason that you have given us, Lord, to gather together. Lord, as one nation under God, Lord, in you we trust. Lord, bless men and women, Lord, who lay their lives upon the line every day for the safety of this community. Lord, bless their homes. Bless the homes, Lord, of the councilmen and the women, Lord, in administrative body. Lord, may we find ourselves fitting in peace with all that has been done for us through Jesus Christ. And I pray.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. The first item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. George?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Jim?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Not seeing any discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes eight zero. We don't have anything this evening for awards or presentations. We do have Karen Spurlock signed up to speak at public forum.
This is the first time that I've been here, but I guess.
Just state your name and address and then go right ahead.
Karen Kate Spurlock. 6213 Northwest Parkview Street, Park City. And the reason I'm here tonight is because I'm having a problem with neighbors, primarily one that has an RV camper parked six and a half feet from my bedroom window. Normally that wouldn't be a problem, except for he's like living in it. He lives in the house, but he's in the camper all the time. So when I go to bed, that's about when he goes to bed. So then him and his 10-year-old boy are out there in 20-degree weather, run an extension cord from his house to the RV. He has to turn off all the electrical, the breaker box, everything. Nothing can run in the house. He's got to shut all that down or kicks it out to be able to run the camper. So in my eyes, that's a safety risk. And because he's a hoarder and has so much stuff in that house, a fire would probably fall into my lap because I'm six and a half feet away from it. And I'm just, I'm worried. I'm worried for that child. I'm worried for him. I'm worried for myself. That it's unsafe. It's, I have no privacy. It's like having my neighbor sleeping in my bedroom. And it's just a little too weird. And I've talked to the zoning guy about it. And apparently there's something about municipal code and city code and the two conflict each other. One says, no, he can't do this. Another one says, yes, he can. So I guess I'm trying to figure out how this can be resolved safely because I have tried to talk to him. That ended up with him come running out of the house after me. And I thought he was going to hit me. And he's like 6'2", 250 pounds. I'm 5'3", 130 pounds. So he wouldn't have to do much to hurt me. But I'm scared. I'm scared. I can't just move. And I feel like, you know, I'm paying my rent. I've done a lot of work on the house. I've straightened up the yard. I've cleaned it up. And on both sides of me, I live in a garbage dump. On one side, I have a boat, a camper, a pole behind camper, and a pickup truck full of stuff. That's his yard. His yard over here is RV, a tent he put up on the Fourth of July last year and never took down, a trampoline. If we have garbage and it gets away from us, so be it. So I just feel like on both sides of me, and I want to buy the house. I have a chance to buy the house. But I'm seriously thinking, do I want to do that? You know, and with Amazon coming in, I would think that we want to clean up as much as we can. We want to hopefully invite a better quality of people in that area over there. I know it's not all the best of people, but there's a lot of homeowners in there that are trying to keep their stuff nice. But when you have people that don't care, and apparently that's okay to have all that junk in the backyard. And, you know, I go out and they plant flowers. I planted trees. I've cut trees. I've done all sorts of things out there. Who wants to be in your backyard when you're surrounded by junk? And then you got somebody in the camper always looking at you. It's just creepy.
Okay. We'll follow up with you personally.
Okay.
We'll look into this. And I know exactly what the conflict is within the two codes.
Okay.
And we'll bring that back to council and see if they want to address it.
Okay.
Because it is a problem.
It is a problem. And I'm hoping that he does not find out, the owner of that camper, that I'm the one that's here tonight, because there will be repercussions. And I just, I just want to remain anonymous. I mean, when they're six and a half feet away from each other, that's not a good place to park a camper with two tanks of LP gas on it.
Okay.
It's just scary.
We'll reach out to you personally and we'll discuss it.
I appreciate it.
We'll look at a resolution and we'll bring it back to the council.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That was all we had this evening for public forum. So we'll move on to staff reports and we'll get to hear from our new public works director. Simon?
Mayor, council, how you guys doing today?
Good. How are you?
Doing pretty good. So I've been here whopping, what, about 22 days so far. And what I'm going to cover is what we accomplished in those last 22 days and then what we're working on for the future. So as far as our water wastewater department, we performed 175 utility locates, repaired two water main leaks, replaced the water main valve, read 3,269 meters with a 95.4% accuracy rate, completed 84 service order requests and installed one new service. The parks department, the parks department excavated a sinkhole at Osage Trail Park, the park with the beaver problem. And we found a leaking culvert that was causing that sinkhole. They began on the process of assembling the replacement site at the main playground at McLean Park. And they trimmed trees at McLean and Habger Park and removed the park sign at Osage Trail because of rotting post in which they're in the process of gathering estimates for replacement. They assisted the street department in snow and ice removal. They assisted the water department with water, water main leaks. They performed water meter re-reads and cross-trained to better position our department for future needs. They cleaned the walls and appliances of the community building and performed a playground inspection of all playground equipment and placed an order to replace items that were deficient. Just some, some basic swings and stuff like that. The street department, they finalized that leak of the Osage Trail culvert repair. And they completed the assembly and installation of the replacement site at McLean Park. They performed street sweep operations throughout the city focusing on the main arterial streets. They installed new 40 mile per hour speed limit signage throughout the city and are preparing to install the 25 mile per hour keep kids alive, drive 25 signage and the new no truck signage. They performed grading operations, placed new base rock as needed on approximately two miles of roads, performed pothole repairs throughout the city using approximately 750 pounds of pothole patching material, and performed tree trimming operations along 69th and Reese Court and along 58th to improve the line of sight. The maintenance department repaired three S10 pickups, one Colorado pickup and one speed trailer, along with two Ford tractors for the Purple Wave auction. They're actually online now if people would like to bid on those items. Performed maintenance on 15 vehicles and various city buildings. So as far as the future, so when I came in here, we're, we're trying to figure out what all's going on and, and trying to place ourself as a city and in our, what we have to do in the future. One of the things is AWI A risk and resiliency assessment is required by the EPA. We have to have that done by June the 30th of 21. I've started working on that, trying to figure out what we need to do. Zach and I both are taking classes to try to figure out how we're going to complete that requirement. We also had a KDHE inspection at the end of December. They found a few deficiencies that we have to address by April the 27th. And I'll just read off those deficiencies so you guys are aware of what we're doing. The water tower vents and all three water towers are non-compliant. So we're going to have to replace those vents. I have started gaining estimates to get the, try to figure out what it's going to cost. So I could bring that to you guys at the next council meeting. We have, they think we have an outstanding public notice, but KDHE is not really aware of what, what that is right now. I've been talking to them, trying to figure out what that outstanding public notice is, but they're not too sure themselves. Hopefully I'll have that worked out here pretty quick. Our emergency water supply pan, we do have our emergency water supply pan, but it's outdated. So I've been working on updating that. I've emailed out a draft to the city staff to try to overlook, review it and see what we need to do to correct and make it a little bit better. I'm also working with KDHE and Kansas Municipal Utilities to try to draft up a really, really good solid plan that we could use for years to come. We have to create and implement a disinfection slash disinfection by products rule plan. I'm working with KDHE and KMU to develop the plan. I'm not really sure exactly what they're wanting on that, but hopefully I'll find out here pretty quick. And then we have another finding is that we have to create and update our bacteriological sampling site plan. So every, every week we have to pull samples from different places, usually just about every day, and test our chlorine residual and stuff like that. When COVID hit, it kind of shut all that down because a lot of our sites were actually inside people's houses. And due to social distancing, we can't do that anymore. So we're trying to figure out how we could realign our sampling map. And actually Sean and I were working on that today a little bit so I could submit that to where we can have businesses in each area. And then we could come up with those areas and try to cover those, those required five per area sampling stations. The pump facility two, which is a Colomseum pump station, the water booster station, they found it to be severely dilapidated. I've met with Kirk regarding the removal of the station altogether. So we, I had the water department go out and check the flow with the pump off. And we're getting ready to provide more information to Kirk to try to figure out what we need to do about that. What I'm going to propose to do is tie the lines in underground and eliminate the building as a whole. The pump facility one is the Wichita Pump Station. It's down there at the high school. They found it to be severely dilapidated as well. I went, I was out there this morning. We threw a breaker this morning. I went out there and looked and I think it's stuff we can handle mostly in-house. So we're going to try to handle that in-house to keep the cost down. And then we have a couple minor fines, which is cross connection control program needs to be updated. And I've been working, working on that. And then we had a tree at the pump facility one that we've already removed. So that's all good to go. Tomorrow I'll be sending a letter to KDHE with the update on our plan on how we're going to fix these findings. And we'll go from there. Do you guys have any questions?
Does anybody have any questions? Ben?
Yes, sir, I do. One, I want to say thank you to you and to the staff that came out. So one of the lines that they've repaired was mine. It bust at 3:30 in the morning on Sunday. And so thank you to all those that came out and worked during the cold for that. Appreciate that. Second, although I do have a question. And it came up, I know that at some point we had mulch that had been preserved or kept over at Hat McLean that was supposed to go into the parks area. And I don't know where that process is at.
Okay. Yeah, I can answer that. So we do have mulch on hand. We're going to have to buy some extra mulch. But with the freezing temperatures, the way they are right now, we just repaired that slide. So when they, when I had the street department go in and finish the assembly of that slide, they had to pour concrete at the basis. We did that last Friday. So we're waiting on that concrete to set up a little bit. They're going to remove the forms. It's freezing cold temperature. So we're trying to keep that concrete insulated so it doesn't freeze and start fracturing prematurely, right? So once that concrete sets up, we'll get out there and install that new mulch on the, on the playground.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Brandy?
On the street sweeper, I've seen it out a couple times. How often does that go out?
So I have, right now I have a staff of three within the street department. So what I've been trying to do is run it in the afternoons because the mornings have been just too cold to run it. The thing has water tanks in it and everything else. Last week, I think we ran it a total of three or four afternoons. We're running as much as we can with the, with the other priorities that we have throughout the city. But sometimes it feels like maybe it's not enough, but we're, we're going to pick that up a little bit more in the future.
Is there a schedule as far as what, what the order of streets are?
So my main thing is we want to get our main thoroughfares taken care of, such as 61st and hydraulic and, and those kind of roads, and then move into the residential areas. So we've been driving around pretty much all the residential areas. They're almost identical in the amount of debris that are in the gutter lines. But our main thoroughfares is what people see when they come to town. And we want people to be happy to come here. And we're trying to take care of those main thoroughfares to make our city look good and work our way out to the residential areas.
I've just, I've seen comments and I've heard comments of people talking about, you know, we got a street sweeper, but you know, they don't ever see it out. And so that's why I was questioning if we had kind of a schedule as to where it might be, that it's maybe something we could put together and put out there so people could see that it is out and working.
Right. I would, I would love to do that, but we don't have, I don't have the staff dedicated where I could do, where I can necessarily put somebody in that street sweeper all the time right now.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
That was it for staff reports and we'll move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion? Ben?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
And Jim?
I'll second that.
We got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes eight zero. I would ask for a motion to recess so that we can convene as the land bank. 25 minutes.
I'd make a motion. We adjourn for 25 minutes.
John?
Second.
Okay. Got a motion and a second. Not seeing any discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes eight zero. We're back from our recess and we're reconvening at 7:48. And that will bring us to item nine, which is discuss and consider approval for a bid for Mies Construction for 61st Street Water Man, Water Main Relocates. Sean?
Yes, sir. In support of the 61st Street project, certain water lines adjacent to the intersection need to be relocated prior to the construction of the actual intersection. A bid opening was conducted on January 19th and a total of four companies submitted their bids. The lowest one is Mies Construction and they have an amount of $155,884. The engineer's estimate was $149,99955. So the bid is within its 3% range. Utility relocates are budgeted within the overall project budget. Utility relocates, as council is well aware, we start off with engineer design and then we do right-of-way acquisitions, utility relocates, and then we actually get into the construction phase. For utility relocates, $165,000 within the budget. And it is, it does fall under the responsibility of the city to relocate lines prior to construction. Staff recommends approval of the bid tabulation and again authorizing the mayor to execute final contract with Mies Construction in an amount not to exceed $1,55884.
Thank you, Sean.
Sir.
I don't really have any questions, so I'd go ahead and move to approve the bid tabulation and authorize the mayor to finalize and execute a contract with Mies Construction in the amount not to exceed $155,884 from the capital project fund, 61st Street North from Broadway to the Wichita Valley Center floodway project.
Brandy?
I'll get his motion.
Okay. Got a motion and a second. Not seeing any discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes eight zero. That brings us to item 10, which is discuss and consider a contract with Predictive Text LLC. Dana?
Thank you, mayor and council, and really thank you for your consideration of this item this evening. What we're asking is for consideration to add another tool basically to our HR toolbox. This is something that will assist us in hiring, developing and team building efforts for our staff. And we do have a great staff here and I, I appreciate every time I get the opportunity to say that. So I want to say that right off the bat. Basically what we're looking at is, is we know that our service is only as good as our employees. Every employee in every department, from the front desk to our police department, fulfills an important mission here at the city. They're the backbone to every organization. And a concept that has been around for a long time, and I can say that because I've been in the HR world for a long time, is something that is described in the book Good to Great. Basically, you look at as employees like they're on a bus. You've got to get those employees, the right ones, in the right seat on that bus. And I see the mayor looking at me. He knows that this is true. This is how we do our mission. First people, then direction. Once you fill the right people in the right seats, it becomes less of a question of where you're headed and instead of how far you can go. Hiring the right person who is the right fit for the position is that important first step. The city already has included in what we do, we have a rigorous system when it comes to hiring. We include interviews, reference checks, skill testing, background screens. We're asking that this is another one of those assessment tools that we would be able to, to add. It is a talent optimization platform. It's an assessment tool that can be utilized to match candidates to the right job. And then once that we have them onboarded, there's a component that can be utilized to develop and motivate that employee and then to use it for team building so that we have a good, strong team moving ahead. In your packet, I included some information that shows those two aspects of the software and what you can see in the hiring process and also in that inspiring process. It is something that is in compliance with the EOC guidelines for employment assessments, which is extremely important. It is a free choice tool. Individuals choose words that best describe themselves. It's very quick. It's very easy. I took it myself. It took about six minutes to complete. What it does is it measures stable traits, those that will not change over time. It has a high reliability rate. It's been shown to identify valid job predictors and predictors of job performance. In addition, we have a department head who has used this before they came to work for us here at the city and feels that it worked very well in the hiring and keeping people in the right seats process for them. The cost of turnover is high. Adding a tool that can assist to getting the right person in the seat, develop their talents, build a strong team environment, keep them in the seat would be a valuable asset. I'd answer any questions.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions?
Yes, I would go ahead and make a motion to approve a contract with the predictive index for the hire and inspire subscription plans at an annual rate of $4,326.85 per year and subsequent annual automatic renewals at that same rate to be paid out of the general fund, Human Resources Department.
Now second the motion.
Okay. Got a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes eight zero. Thanks very much, Dana.
Thank you.
That brings us to item 11, which is discuss and consider an ordinance amending section 4-703 of the municipal code relating to the approved locations for occupied mobile homes, manufactured homes, and recreational vehicles. Doug?
Mayor and council, this really responds to the lady that was here in public forum. And it was her concerns that were expressed to code enforcement that gave rise to our finding out that we had this conflict. The conflict is between the provisions of the municipal code, which prevent occupying a recreational vehicle in any place in the city other than a camp. And that's capital C camp, and that's defined as a place where they have RV parking and, and actually there is none in, in the city of Park City that I'm aware of. I think the closest one is down around K96 and Hillside. The conflict with that occurs in provisions of Article Six of the zoning code. And several of you, I'm sure, have been on long enough to remember how that came about. You, and I won't include everybody, but several of you were involved in permitting occupancy in residential zoned properties when the RV was occupied for no more than 15 days and parked appropriately on paved or gravelled surfaces. What you have in front of you today is a cleanup of section 4703, which is the overall prohibition that says you can't occupy one unless it's a camp. So the, the ordinance then would include or in compliance with Article Six of the city's zoning provisions. That takes care of the conflict. But the significant problem, which you may have read between the lines when the lady was up here talking about her contact with code enforcement, is that present provision in the, in Article Six of the zoning code is, is really almost unenforceable. It's just really difficult. We, we don't have staff, number one, to sit and watch people and tick off every day that there's somebody in there. And, and you know, I mean, this lady doesn't, wasn't happy with the situation, but we, we don't want neighbors doing the same to their neighbors. And they're, and I think it was thought when this was put in there that there are really legitimate reasons to have people in RVs in residential driveways parked back and on gravelled surfaces for short periods of time. It, it works for the community, people visiting and that sort of thing. So if we are going to do something to improve the enforceability of the provision that we have in the zoning regulations to allow this under certain circumstances, we need to go first to the planning commission. So what I'm asking you to do tonight is, number one, adopt the ordinance. So what I'm asking you to do tonight is, number one, adopt the ordinance which cleans up the conflict and then give staff some direction on how you want the provision to read. And, and I do have some suggestions that have come from code enforcement. So the first question is, and maybe you can answer that real quickly, do we want to absolutely prohibit this? Because we can't just have people only occupying RVs when they're in a camp. But if we want to allow it, it's okay to allow it in the zoning regulations, and we have to go to the planning commission first. The suggestion from code enforcement is to have people get a permit, no cost, but a permit that specifies up to certain number of days, let's take fifteen, that's where we are today, and gives the dates, starting on March first, ending on March sixteenth. I'm going to have somebody occupying the RV in my, in my driveway, and I need a permit to do that. And then allow one or two of those every year, per RV and per residence location. And then third, make it part of the ordinance and a requirement that in order to do that, besides getting the permit, the permit has to be posted on the RV in a place where it's visible, so code, code enforcement doesn't have to go knocking on doors and asking people to show it, they can just go by and, and see that it's on there. So I, I guess that's the second part after considering the ordinance, is some direction to staff about how to draft something to take to the planning commission that then would ultimately come back to you for inclusion in the zoning regulations.
This is one of those things that, you know, I brought up earlier where it's been a hot topic many times. I personally think we've been soft on that. I mean, we've allowed people to be able to park behind their house on their setback to store their RVs, and then it, and then we start learning, then we get into this gray area where people are living there and they're hooked up, and we've been soft overall on enforcement of that. I think some of that's picked up a little bit, but, you know, even in some of our newer homes that we have now, I'm seeing big fifth wheels just parked out in the, in the, in the driveway. And at some point, we need to decide what we want to do about that. And for me, I'm always in favor of protecting the homeowner and their property values and being able to enjoy your own home when you come home that you don't feel like, you know, you're living next to a RV park. Now, there have been a lot of people that have invested in their areas where they can park those things. I'm not saying we probably shouldn't get back away from that, but I mean, even along Sixty-first Street, I think we all know of a place where we've had a mobile home sitting out there, slides out, and you know people are living in there. But that's because we have this fourteen, fifteen-day rule where we're allowing people to do that, and I just don't think we should. And code enforcement has talked to us about this before of, you know, filing a permit to, you know, somebody can bring their travel trailer home, pack it, get it ready for a trip, there's nothing wrong with that. But it's when it just becomes an ice war and sticks there all the time, and that's what we have a lot going on in town.
Jen?
Okay, this has come up in my neighborhood too, so I've had some free thought to this. And, and our neighborhood, the HOA is dealing with it, but, yeah, first off, Doug, yeah, let's clean up the, the code so it's enforceable. I, I fully support that. I, I remember the last time there was a lot of discussion about when, you know, family members or grandma or grandpa come and during the summer months and, and stay, and you, you didn't want to prohibit that. And I think that's why it, it was allowed in some form. So I like the idea of still allowing that, but cleaning it up. So, you know, this, the thought of making everybody get a permit and post it in the window, I love that. I mean, there's no fee for that, so that seems practical. I know it's an extra step, but it would, it would clean it up. Something that I wanted to see was, what about the folks that park the camper, you know, say it's two weeks, and then they move it and repark it ten feet down or on the street, or move it from the sidewalk, or the park driveway from the sidewalk or the street? Well, I guess if we're issuing permits, we could eliminate that too, because there was...
Yeah, because that's one of the problems we have now is...
Yeah.
Somebody pulls it out, brings it back after it's been gone overnight, and now we've reset the fifteen days.
Yeah, and we had no way to control that.
Exactly.
So there we go. I like that the permit should, should do that. I could think, couldn't we even add a, a second type of permit for storage? You know, where, because for the people that have built the driveway or the gravel on the side of their house, you know, that, that gives code enforcement the opportunity to review a lot and figure out if a lot is conducive to storing an RV, and it's not six feet from somebody's window. Those are ideas, but, anyway, I, that was just my thought on it is, we had fifteen days in there, you know, two weeks, that's, that's still, I'm still okay with that. I just would like to see the permit issued upfront, free of cost, and then maybe a penalty at the end of it if they don't comply. Put the fee at the end of it.
Okay, Tom, and then Brandy.
I'll go ahead and get Brandy now, make a comment.
Okay.
Well, around my area, there's two or three of them sitting out there in the middle of the street. Can we put something in here that talks about where they can't park it in the street? It needs to be parked in a drive or something? Because you can't, they're just, they're just ice, and they're just, they're just sitting there and they don't move. And then what about the ones that, I know when we've had this discussion before, there's those that are grandfathered in. How do we know who's grandfathered in? Is there a way to remove the grandfather clause?
Well, there's, there's, they're slowly going out of existence, and I don't know, when code enforcement was talking to me about the, the grandfathered, located vehicles, they're down to just a handful, so that's not an issue. I, I hate to do this, but when we get, this gets really confusing to focus when we're talking about people living in the RV tonight. We can certainly address the other issues, but to try to put that all together right now with this lady's concerns, and again, when she says the six feet, there may just be nothing we can do about the six feet, because if there's a driveway and it's paved and they're back of the, the, of the setback, right now, our code permits people to park RVs and boats and trailers in that area. Now, I think her concern was somebody who's living in it, and that was what was really bothering her. So we can take care of, we can start to take care of that tonight. And then I'd be happy to address the other issues, one, we can identify them, but I'd like to talk to code enforcement a little bit more about some of that.
Okay, and I'm, I'm fully okay with that. I would, I, but I do want to have a discussion about that piece of it as well then.
And that's kind of what I brought up earlier, that we need to bring this back because it's deep to actually make some corrections on this.
Tom?
I was just going to say, during that same timeframe that Doug was talking about, I think that the mobile home park over on Broadway came in and asked for short-term leases. So they've got something in there where that you can, short-term, or had something where you could do a short-term monthly rental or whatever for a lot over there.
Some of them are doing weekly.
But I looked through this, and George and George and I looked through this a couple of years ago, and it was an issue then, and we need to address this. I think Doug's on the right track with this.
And George?
Well, without a camp here, it's, 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 it's kind of rough. I understand you can't pass a legislation to make someone a good neighbor, you just can't do it. But there used to be a camp up at, at the Coliseum, is that still there?
It's still there, but, yeah.
But it's private now. Well, you know, it's tough trying to pass something where we don't have a facility, like if someone comes in here from Arizona or somewhere, and what are they supposed to do? They come to visit for crying out loud, what are they supposed to do? You know, I, I, I understand this lady's problem, that, that's one thing, but, but we're getting off that. We're talking about people coming in here, maybe spending two or three nights in their camper, visiting and going on their way. And I think there's entirely two different issues there. But I agree with the, with a permit.
Well, it's hard to distinguish between the, I understand what you're saying, but again, that's not a code enforcement kind of deal to decide, is this just grandma and grandpa coming and staying for three days, or is this, you know, somebody that's living in it? And so what we really need to do is to, is to, I, I think, do something that, that everybody can agree is reasonable to accommodate the people that come to visit. And right now, you know, I mean, that's fifteen days seems to me to be kind of like a long time. I'm not sure I'd want somebody visiting me in my driveway for fifteen days, but, but that's where it is. And if we have a permit, then I think it becomes really enforceable and, and, and we won't, we have a way to deal with the problem that the lady presented to us tonight.
Couldn't we shorten that permit time?
Sure.
A week?
Sure, seven days, that sounds more reasonable to me, but that's your call.
I would think they'd wear out their welcome by then.
There's no way for us to know that, though.
Ben, and then John.
I agree with the idea of, of having a permit time available, not taking away. Coming from some of the things on entrance side, I could definitely see the value of two weeks' time for whatever, for various reasons. We've had, we had clients who had fire in their home, small fire, had to have remodeled, they moved out to their, they stayed out in their RV while that work was getting done. Like I said, not large, not large amounts of work, but, you know, ten days worth of work or so, where they might just stay out there. So I wouldn't necessarily want to keep prohibiting or knock that down further, just because there are some of those circumstances. Obviously, if we're getting into months, that's a whole different story. But there are instances like that that happen as well as family visiting or whatever the case might be, various needs and such. So I agree with the original approach that Councilman Schrader mentioned, and that is doing the permits, fifteen days seems like a reasonable amount there, seems to make sense.
John?
I was agree, in agreement. I, I like the longer span, just, just trying to kind of, I guess, think of someone that's coming to help someone with a medical issue or something like that, that may be staying out in a camper where there's a little bit of space between, but I'm not sure that seven days is really long enough. If you, if we do seven days, I think we maybe want to allow more than two times a year. But I, I think the fourteen or fifteen days is a better idea.
George?
Yeah, I, you know, we've kind of passed this around some time ago about how much time we want to give them, especially when it's parked out in the driveway, some of these RVs. So we really need to nail down. My concern is for the lady, myself. She's scared, she's in a situation where she's up against something, she doesn't know how to deal with it. If they're living in it, for me, they need to be in an RV park, if they're living in it. It's one thing to be in it two or three days, four days, but if you're actually living in that tr, in that camper, you need to be in an RV park. She's six and a half foot away, and then you've got electrical issues, you've got possible fires that may happen as a result of that hookup with that camper, and she's so close to this other place, and it's like, I would be scared as well. So I would, I would think we'd want to nip it in the butt tonight, as far as how long do we want to allow them to live if we want to let them live in the camper as opposed to what we had before? I would, I would be okay with a shorter amount of time, but not fifteen, twelve, fifteen days. For me, that's actually living, as far as living in a camper, as opposed to just staying for a couple of, you know, coming from another state and staying in that camper, visiting someone.
So first...
We don't have any ability in code enforcement, again, to distinguish people's state of mind. And so occupying is living, it's being in there, and, you know, again, if, spending the night in there, cooking your meals in there, I mean, that's occupying it, and that's the thing that somebody can do when they're legitimately in the driveway for seven or ten days to visit, and it's also what somebody can be doing when they're, for whatever reason, not living in their house, but living out there and, like, right now, for a long, long time. So, so to me, the permit is the only enforceable way that we have to do this and setting some period of time. And then if they're in it outside the permit, write them a ticket. That, that's the solution, and that's the way code enforcement can operate.
Jen?
Doug, I can't remember if we did this last time, but I'd be interested to know what neighboring cities, how they're handling it.
I'm sorry, I didn't?
I'm curious. I can't remember if we did this last time, but I'm, I was curious to know how neighboring cities handle this. Not that you would have that information on the spot, but when we come back, I'd be...
I think what we need to do is probably just need to have a workshop on this, because it's a, it's a big item.
Yeah, I could see this getting big.
It, and it's one that every time, I know I've brought it up in the past, we don't really want to tackle it. We, we have a conversation like we're having tonight, and then we don't really make any changes. And this needs to be addressed, and, you know, comes back to the, you know, what the land bank just did, and, and I tried to tell you, I think that we're worth more than, than what we were, and then we came back and we got some better offers, and we're sending out a message, we have a higher value. And I'm sorry, but that devalues the community when you have somebody living there. And I think fourteen, fifteen days is a ridiculous amount of time. Now, granted, what Ben brought up is reasonable, but we can always have something where the council can prove an extended stay if somebody has a specific reason, but that's not what got the conversation going tonight. It's not because somebody's having something done, it's because that is the behavior that's happening. And somehow, we got to change that behavior side of it.
So if we fix the zoning conflict tonight, does that help with the situation?
Yes.
Yes, you're fixing by not dealing with zoning, but dealing with the provision in the municipal code that talks, it talks really about the location of mobile homes and manufactured homes, and then it throws in recreational vehicles. And so we're just, we're just adding to that general prohibition against not being able to occupy an RV except in a camp to say, or in, in compliance with one, you can, you can locate it in compliance with one of the exceptions listed below, or locate it in compliance with Article Six, one hundred B five of the zoning regulations. And then it's the zoning regulations that we need to have discussion about tweaking, because right now, that's, it says fifteen days at any one time, and it's really difficult, like, somebody was giving an example, that person could go around the block and come back and say, well, that was my fifteen days at that time, and now I've got another fifteen days in this time. And, and code enforcement doesn't, they aren't staffed, and it's just really an impossibility to try to enforce it that way.
Sean, you and I, let's work together and bring back at the next meeting a workshop date on when we can have some deeper discussion on this.
Yes, sir.
Tom?
There are some other items that probably ought to be discussed in that workshop, too, because at one time, we had, in the code enforcement manual, something about dead trees, pine wilt, stuff like that, and removing trees. And I've been told since then about some, that that's not there anymore, so...
We can talk about that, another one, but...
That's another one, because I mean, there's...
I'm telling you, we are going to spend a lot of time talking about RVs.
I understand.
Yes, sir.
Brandy?
I make a motion to approve ordinance eleven thirteen dash twenty twenty-one, amending section four dash seven oh-three of the municipal code, the city of Park City, Kansas, pertaining to the approval of locations for mobile homes, manufactured homes, and recreational ve, vehicles, and repealing the original of said section four dash seven oh-three.
John?
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second?
I have a question. Was the sticker timeframe in that motion to direct them to do that?
So we're going to have a workshop later to talk about stuff? Okay, so we have a motion and a second? Not seeing any further discussion, all those in favor? Marlo, would you call the roll? Been a while.
Sean Lynn here.
Aye.
George Glover.
Aye.
Ben Sosetta.
Aye.
Melvin Kerr.
Aye.
Tom Jones.
Aye.
George Capps.
Aye.
Brandy Bailey.
Aye.
Jim Schrader.
Aye.
And that ordinance passes eight, zero. Thank you, Marlo. All right, that brings us to governing body reports. We'll start with Ben.
Yeah, um, threw me off there. I don't have anything.
Okay, Melvin?
I don't have anything.
Brandy?
I don't have anything.
Jen?
Great discussion tonight, but I don't have anything to add.
George?
I don't have anything.
I don't have a lot. I've got something I'd like to say. I think there's a real assault in this country on our right for free speech. I agree that there are certain elements trying to muzzle us, and they're trying to take away our guns. And I just think we ought to be aware of what's going on, pay attention to what's going on in our federal government.
Tom? Don't have anything.
George?
Yeah, I don't have anything, just a shout-out to my nephew Josh, who's coming up to visit from the big state of Florida. Thank you.
And Sean?
I was just going to ask at the next council meeting, I remember when we did the budget, we set some money aside for a couple of things, pickleball court, and then I think we set some money aside for the repairs or improvements to the baseball fields. I want to say we did about eighty or thirty or fifty thousand. I'm just curious if there's been any movement on that, and I don't have anything tonight, but at the next meeting.
Update in park board and some of that.
Thank you. I'd make a motion to adjourn.
Ben? All right, we got a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And that motion passes eight zero. Thank you.